The Columbus City Council Meeting for July 21st, 2025 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, the current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Assistant Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Alarcon.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Palensky.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling. Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our federal citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Oh, see, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous flight; over ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there; oh, see, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the free?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting anyone in our audience would like to address the council on any item on our agenda, we'd ask that you please come forward, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you limit any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the July 7th, 2025 city council meeting. Item 4B, reappointment of Keith Gilmore to the Board of Appeals for a three-year term. Item 4C, resolution number R25-98, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item 4D, Finance Department report. And item 4E, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings this evening.
Item 7A, public hearing, the Citizens Advisory Review Committee Report of Activities in accordance with the Columbus Economic Development Plan.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for the public hearing? Would you like to just summarize what the public hearing is, please?
Sure. The Citizens Advisory Review Committee is the group of citizens who oversee the Columbus Economic Development Program and funds and make recommendations to the city council. So every six months, we do a report on their behalf of activities for the previous six months. The financial report for the fund is attached here. Currently, there is $825,589.78 of unassigned funds in that, in the economic development funds available for use. In the last six months, the CARC recommended approval of a loan to Kay Herman Development for two housing projects, and that was approved by the council. And then the other major activity in the last six months is the renewal of the Columbus Economic Development Program by Columbus's registered voters. So that will actually, that new funding and everything related to that vote will take effect April 2027.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B, a public hearing for the application from Redevelopment LLC and Highland Park Evangelical Church for a final plat of North Creek subdivision. This is on 43rd Avenue, south of 38th Street. The planning commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak toward or for this public hearing? We would not want you to come all this way and not say hello.
Andrew Tupin, 1733 Eagle Street, Grand Island, Nebraska. Upon approval of the final plat, we should start moving dirt here within the next couple of weeks with like scheduled for early spring of 2026 for the first couple of buildings to open up.
Very good.
Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B-1, resolution number R25-99, approving the final plat and development agreement.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R25-99?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-99. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Brings us up to, where am I? New business.
Reports of city offices, right? No. Yeah, reports of city offices.
I did miss something.
No, that's all right.
No.
Item 9A, update on the Nebraska Department of Transportation, 23rd Street Reconstruction Project. Your city engineer, Rick Bogus, will give that.
Sorry, Rick, I almost missed you there.
I know, you tried to escape me.
All right.
Things are going pretty well. It's the last time we talked, there's a lot more concrete on the ground. There are scheduled to open 26 avenues crossing on Thursday, which would also mean then that 23rd Avenue's crossing will close on Thursday. They had to change their paving plans a little bit. They were going to try to do a major pour last week, but the weather kind of got them. So, but it's okay. What they'll do is they'll close 23rd Avenue and they'll make just a longer pour when they're able to do that, once they get everything removed at 23rd Avenue. So, but it's, everything's overall on schedule for again, maybe all the paving to be done probably early in September, but the project again will go through November for everything that needs to be done.
Any questions for Rick on 23rd Street?
How long do you expect 23rd Avenue to be closed?
It's going to be a few weeks because, you know, the removals, right, and they have to do the mainline paving through it, then they have to go back to the south side and pour a little bit. So that takes a little bit of time. So it will, will most likely not be open by the time school starts, but I'd say towards that end of August time period.
Thank you.
All right. 9B?
Oh, sorry. Item 9B, update on the Nebraska Department of Transportation, Loop River Bridge Project.
Well, that's going well, too. So that's removal part. So if you've been to the south side of it, you can see some of those segments are taken down already and a lot of them are hauled off. So what they can do on the south side, what they can do is work except for in the river right now, there's environmental things that can't be done until August 1st. So they're setting everything up for August 1st to begin a couple of the blastings of the south, a couple of them. They're, right now, it's not finalized, but it's tend to the first weekend in August that they'll do that. And they're working on their contractor temporary bridge, now they're allowing them to do all the construction. And with that, then the Pony Park Underpass, kind of, it's been poured, and so they're waiting to take everything off and get it all ready to go because come August 1st, then that will be where the trail will go to instead of underneath where the bridge is today, so they can get all that done. And it'll be that way until early 2027. But again, overall, they're on schedule from where they really need to be. Oh, also, I might add, if I could add more thing, come August 1st through the end of October, the recreation for the river will need to cease at that site. So the river crossing, you know, airboats, four-wheelers, things like that. The DOT will send out a press release on that. They've been in contact with a lot of the people. I know there's an airboat thing this weekend, I believe, but that obviously is before August 1st, so should be good.
Will they put anything down there?
They won't physically put anything there. There'll be signage. And then they'll, of course, when they're worked, they'll try to be more cognizant of, make sure nobody does, goes through that, but that's when they're not there. But they really can't do too much because of the river.
I would assume your airboat people will all get communicated because that's a pretty definite group. Your four-wheeling world might have a little more issue with being informed, but hey, all we can do is get it out there and, you know, inform the public the best.
A new bridge. And then that bridge, the northbound bridge, the one that you're talking about, there'll be some patching of it done. It is, it is not a total redecking. It's just patching of those bad areas. So somewhere down the line, they'll have to redeck that bridge, but, but they have patching for those areas that you're talking about, that northbound bridge. And then also, they think they're fixing some railing and things of that nature that's in bad shape right now, too.
The bridge is going to last or the, we're not going to have to do anything between now and then?
No, it won't be like the, the bridge are taken down now. It shouldn't be like that. It's, it's in a lot better shape.
Well, I appreciate the explanation because I was under the impression that the, that side was getting totally reconstructed.
Yeah, no, it's not a total redecking. It's just patching. So how long it'll last after we redo that, somewhere down the road will be.
It's on, it's on the state for that decision.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's fine. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Bogus? Seeing none, we'll just move on to new business.
Item 13A, appointment of Martavis Pennington as a police officer.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor wishes to submit the name of Martavis Pennington for conditional appointment as police officer. Subject to successful completion of all tests and training, the Civil Service, Civil Service Commission certified this candidate at their May 13, 2025 meeting. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period for the appointment of a police officer is waived. Mr. Pennington is a resident of Gretna, Nebraska, and graduated from Lamar County High School. He's held positions as operation manager and social support manager in Omaha, Nebraska, where he utilized his skills in team leadership, client relationship, strategy development, and customer support. He has a passion for helping youth with disabilities and is currently employed as a residential manager at Developmental Disability Center of Nebraska in Omaha. Mr. Pennington will attend the Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Center and participate in the Columbus Police Department's field training. This is a budgeted position. Council members, do I have a motion for this appointment?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Chief Fear, you'd like to come forward and say a few words. Please do.
Chief who?
Fear.
Oh, that's such fear.
No, open your ears, please.
What?
Just Martavis. Probably not too close, though, because you're making me look really small.
Aye.
So when I got hired on, one of the first things we started talking about was recruitment and retention. Martavis was currently, had just passed the civil service interview at the time, and I had, was getting phone calls from civil service, they're stopping me on the street, talking to me, and said, wait till you see this guy that we just interviewed. Martavis, he's amazing. You're not going to believe it. I said, okay, all right, fine. But then he goes into the, the background portion, and Sergeant Strecker, who's also taking credit for hiring Martavis, of course.
Of course.
But anyway, he did a home visit on Martavis and got to meet him and his family and actually talked to his sister, who is a police officer in Alabama.
Yes.
Correct? And was so impressed that we also want to hire her, if she's available, to come to Nebraska. But then Sergeant Strecker talked to me, goes, you, you cannot wait till you meet this guy. He is the real deal. He would fit perfectly with our department. And I hadn't met him yet. And then on the day we were going to give him an offer, he was in Captain Mulcheck's office, and I heard him talking. And I walked in, and I immediately, he made me smile. Just his presence just made me smile because his, his attitude is such a, is so great. He's got a great smile, his attitude, just toward helping people, his desire to help others. He told me that his main mission is to leave a legacy, and that is really in line with what I'm wanting to do here in Columbus as well. So we, we saw eye to eye on a lot of things. He represents all the characteristics that I am looking for in a police officer. I'm very excited to welcome Martavis to the Columbus Police Department family. Like was said, his academy starts in September, and I can't wait to have him back here on the streets and in uniform, once we find a uniform big enough to fit him, because his arms are probably three times the size of mine. But anyway, I'm very excited to have Martavis here, and I'd like to introduce him to you right now. Thanks.
How you all doing? My name is Martavis Pennington. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to meet you all this evening. I bought my family, my fiance, my kids.
Hi, kids.
Yes. I'm thrilled about the opportunity. You know, one thing I, I look back is, back in October, we came up here for a football game, Miller North versus Columbus, and my son was playing, my other son is playing this year with Miller North as well. And I remember telling her, my fiance, I said, hey, what about us moving up here? And my father was like, really? You would do that? And I was like, yeah. I was like, you see that dirt road right there? I said, I would love to have a four-wheeler on it. And I'm from Alabama, born and raised, and, you know, we, we love riding four-wheelers, doing some dirt biking, all in the field. And that's just, you know, that's, that's what we enjoy doing, you know? So this opportunity and then being in this community where it feels like home was just a perfect opportunity for me and my family. So we're thrilled about the opportunity. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here this afternoon and then allow me to share a few words. So I really appreciate you all.
You know, there's, there's probably a couple of football coaches in town that would welcome, you know, the boys, you know?
Yes, thank you so much. They're, they're excited about the opportunity. My, my oldest son, he's got a few offers, college offers right now, so he's super excited about making a decision soon. And then my baby boy, he's, he's definitely a dog.
He's excited about that, I consider.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate you all. Have a great evening.
Congratulations.
All right. Item 13B, quote from Bauer Underground Incorporated in the amount of $36,537.94 for fiber optics constructions for the park and wastewater utility department's maintenance complex project. This is a reallocation from CIP 25-32.
Move that the quote from Bauer Underground be accepted?
Move that the quote from Bauer Underground be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Bauer Underground. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any comments this evening from any council members? Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, ooh, that was really loud, sorry. Centro Hispano and with the City of Columbus Parks and Rec, we have our back-to-school bash this upcoming Sunday here at Frankfurt Square. And we welcome all families from not just Columbus and surrounding areas to come with their families. We are giving away free school supplies to students who are in kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. All free, the event's free, food, bounce houses, foam party. So we just hope that families can come and enjoy. It starts at 3:00, so.
It's been, what, this is the third or fourth year, I think?
Yeah, the fourth year.
Yeah, it's, it's quite an event. Awesome. Any other comments from council members?
In, in driving around today, I found that the Viaduct at ADM was at least partially open. You can drive over the, you can drive over the railroad tracks, which is really neat comparatively speaking.
Very good. Very good. Good to hear that. I have no comments this evening, so we'll move on then to resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R25-100, awarding community development block grant funds to Anthony Creshaw for downtown revitalization.
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution number R25-100 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Any discussion? Seeing none, I would just mention that this would be then toward the, what many people in town would recognize as the Traditions Building. That is what Anthony Creshaw would be doing with these funds. No comments? All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item 15A, ordinance number 25-11, amending section 70.001 of chapter 70 of title seven of the Columbus City Code to amend the definition of utility-type vehicles.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and that ordinance number 25-11 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 25-11 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 25-11.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number 25-11 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 25-11. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Before I hit the gavel, I would just say this is a cleaned-up amendment, ordinance that corresponds with some change in, in the legislative law that from this year on utility, UTV weights and different things within getting our, our ordinance in compliance with state law.
Correct.
Correct? All right. All right. Motion passes.
Item 15B, ordinance number 25-12, amending section 71.999 of chapter 71 of title seven of the Columbus City Code to amend the code reference to the reference, correct, to correct the alcoholic testing code section.
Mr. Mayor, move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number 25-12 be read by number only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 25-12 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance 25-12.
Mr. Mayor, move that ordinance number 25-12 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 25-12. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.